Alright Scott, everyone's in the Zoom, so I'll turn it over to you.
Alrighty, great. Welcome everybody to the Town of Reinbeck zoning board of appeals meeting for March 16th, 2022. And before I get into our agenda, I have to read a little ditty here about the ability to do these things virtually. And hopefully, I think it may be the last time I have to read it, but we'll see. This meeting is being held virtually pursuant to New York State legislation S 50001 slash A 40001, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board to convene meetings during the current pandemic via video conferencing and or telephone conferencing. New York State legislation S 5001 slash A 4001 has been recently extended to March 16th of 2022. Today is the last day of the extension.
It was just extended a couple hours ago till April 15th, I believe.
Oh, really? Alright, well, gang, whoever is here and who may be here at the next meeting, we may be virtual next time around. So we'll see. I think we're finally getting there. So, but anyway, that allows us to go virtually. So what I'll do is I'll call the meeting to order. And the first order of business, well, first of all, let me take a roll call. We have Tim Allenbrook.
Yeah.
Tim Ekonopoly.
Here.
Catherine.
Yes.
Richard.
Sorry, I was on mute here.
Okay, and I believe I am present. So here we go. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at the meeting minutes for February 16th, 2022? I know, Tim, thank you again as usual. Tim Allenbrook for your corrections and all that kind of stuff. I think there were a couple of other minor corrections that I think Jim put in place dealing with the secret determinations, just some minor corrections. And Jim, I don't know if you want to explain that or?
Yeah, so last time around, there were a couple of questions about which exact section of the secret type two criteria we'd be using for a couple of the variances. So I did go back through and review that and made a couple tweaks on those so that we know exactly which ones they are. It doesn't change at all the secret status. It just changes exactly which reference we're going to use. It went from a 16 to a 17, and then I actually changed an additional one as well for the height variance for T Court to actually unlisted because it didn't really fall in the other two categories. So just a clarification mainly for the purposes of the resolution, but again, it doesn't change anything procedurally.
Yeah, they're a type two. So I mean, it didn't change anything. And by the way, thank you. I don't know if you did it after the last meeting. I think I got the new cheat sheet on the seeker sections and particularly the type two action. So I appreciate that. It makes our lives easier. But does anybody have some any other corrections, concerns, or questions? Okay, hearing none, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented with the corrections that we've talked about. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Okay. And all in favor? I. Abstained? Against? Okay, it looks like it's unanimous. So the minutes are approved. This is a little bizarre. We don't have any new business tonight. So we're going to go right into our public hearings. And the first public hearing is the Daniels matter. Are there people here for the Daniels matter? Okay, we have the Daniels here. Anybody else who was on who anticipates either asking questions or being involved in some fashion with regard to this application?
Robert Murray, professional engineer.
Okay. I figured you would be, Robert.
Hi, Scott.
Hi, how are you? Anybody else? Okay, if anybody else-
David Barron's at Forest Lake Dock Road is here as well.
Hi, David. How are you?
Good.
The way we do this is Robert will give an overview of what the application entails. And then you have the opportunity to ask whatever questions you like about the application. And that's the way this thing proceeds. So Robert, why don't you go over the, well, let me, before we get into this, I believe, and I could be incorrect, but I believe the last time around, we had some issues as to the numbers and we got the numbers squared away orally. But we wanted to have a revised application setting forth in writing the numbers with regard to the height. And I think there were a couple of other numbers as I recollect. Was that application amended to reflect the numbers that we discussed at the last meeting?
My application is accurate. You made a special request that I add the height of the buildings to the renderings. I did not manage to get those in on time for a really simple reason. The planning board came back after many months with an engineering report that was actually a result of review of even old submittals to the planning board. We focused on that very much and took to heart your request to be sure we give you everything we give the planning board. So we're preparing a package for them that will be done probably tomorrow, but by Friday. And on it, I mean, there's no surprise, the height of the garage is listed on the rendering, so not just shown. But I further went and measured three times, actually, the height of the existing building. We and studied with a few different options, looking at roof pitches and ceiling heights, the height of the new building. It was our desire and intention in good faith to minimize impact, to show that the new building was actually shorter. It's the same height. So in the end, my new building comes in at 25.8. The existing building that's there is 25.8. The garage is, I don't have the number right in front of me, hasn't changed. It's exactly what we reported last time, like 26. And due in part because we moved the garage to reduce impact to view. And as a result of doing so, the backside of the garage actually is taller because the grave drops off. So it's maybe 24 foot in the front. So I think we're not really here to present any changes. We will, I will report to you that well in advance of your next meeting, you will have for your, for information's sake, all of the planning board requested information, even though I have a suspicion the zoning board doesn't want to concern themselves with half of it. I think the zoning board information is pretty complete.
Okay, so, and that's great. We prefer more information than less information. But from a procedural, I mean, we're going to go forward tonight with the public hearing. So that's, that's not an issue. But we really need, before we can do a resolution, we need to have the application changed in any way, shape, or form to reflect whatever changes there are in the numbers. We need to have firm numbers on the application. So we can do the resolution. And actually, it's, it's, it's not just for the public's benefit. It's also for Catherine's benefits, and she's the one who is going to be writing up this resolution. So it may just be cleaning up a couple of things, but we need to have, I recollect that the numbers were slightly different from the original application to what we discussed at the initial meeting. And to the extent that any numbers are changed or different, we need to have those in and just an amended application to reflect that fact before we do a resolution. So-
Wait, so can I, just quick history. When I first appeared before you, I did not include, it was recognized that I should include a third variance. So you said, hey, we can't accept the application.
Right.
And I went away and said, they're right. I sulked a little bit, but I came back with a very thorough application that still stands. And maybe Jim could show us that first. I think I don't want to change it, but if you want me to-
I'm not talking about changing the application. And you did do a good job. And I think that's the first thing I commended you on is that you gave us renderings and other things, which really helped. But I thought that we've, there's been issues with the numbers. They've, they've kind of floated around a little bit, and I just want to make them in concrete in writing.
Robert, if I can just jump in here. So, you know, in this section, in section three, you did give us the number 2512 representing a 9% over to the 2300, right? It's just that in, you know, 2783 and 2781, it doesn't give us the total number so that the board knows exactly what the variance request is that you're looking for in terms of feet. So they know the distance from, you know, the principal structure to, you know, the garage and from the garage to the street. And then the other one is just the total height of that garage. So we know those exact numbers so that they can then, the board can have that in there. So if you could add those in here like you did with the 2512 square feet, it tells us what's allowed, you know, what you're proposing. And then we know that the difference for the purposes of the resolution.
Great. And we're not, we're, just for the record, we're not pretending it's not, it doesn't exceed 20 feet. I think we reported, it's like 26 feet. And we're, and we've, and we've reported to you the things we had done to reduce the size of the garage and the vision and the impact to the neighbors.
Yes, we did all that. We're just, we're asking for the numbers to just be put on the document.
Okay.
I think we're missing two. You have one. I think we're missing two others. That's all.
Do we have a date? Do we have a date when you need those numbers by, just so there's no confusion?
The sooner the better, probably within, you know, I don't know, can you do it in a week or so or two weeks? This, the way this works is we do a public hearing tonight, and presumably if all the questions are answered and, and we feel comfortable and I'm not saying we won't, we close the public hearing. If we close the public hearing tonight, we have 62 days to do a resolution. I will tell you that my board members and I are very efficient, and we don't wait 62 days. We get it done by the next meeting. So, but we would certainly need it at least a couple of weeks before that because what we're going to do is we're going to go out and we're going to do a site inspection. And then Catherine is going to write up a resolution. And we need to have those numbers taken from the application itself. It has to be in writing. So it's only a couple of numbers, but it's important that we have all the Ts crossed and all the Is dotted.
Got it.
Okay, so with that said.
Thank you.
I'm sure that'll be taken care of. Robert, why don't you take it away? And then we'll take questions from the audience.
Okay. For the record, I just emailed James, Jim, and Gretchen, the renderings with the numbers on them. In addition, I'm happy to change the application to repeat what's on the plans of the renderings. So I can, I can be redundant and I'll do that.
It's not redundant. It's not redundant. The application has to be accurate. That's what we go by, the application. The application, it's a public record. We gotta have the numbers. Everybody else does it. We gotta have the numbers. I don't mean to be a pain in the neck, but I'm here to do a job.
No, I understand.
You know, and it's got to be accurate. You're asking for a variance, which is something, you know, something, a variance from the law, it's got to be precise, and it's got to be in writing.
Thank you. Very clear.
So anyway, I, with that.
We're looking for, we're looking for three variances. And, and the board voted last to put this to public hearing. So I look forward to some comments, questions, and discussion. Efficient, I hope. Our first variance is for the size of the house. I reported last, we spoke that the owners and we have made efforts to reduce, understanding the size and the significance of, and wanting to conform as much as we can. We reduced a number of things, size of the house, use of the basement, and reduced the size of the house to 2,512 square feet. And as I've written in the application, that's about 9% more than the 2,300 square foot listed as allowable in section 1256C7. We think, we think we've done a number of other things to reduce impact. We removed some windows. We shifted the house a little bit south along with the garage, which isn't a size issue. It was just a view impact, if you will. The second, the second variance we're requesting is the structure in the front yard. The structure in the front yard we're requesting is the garage itself. And it's in the front yard because in fact, the main street is Slate Dock Road, which is to the right or to the north. Why do we insist on putting the garage in the front yard? We don't have anyplace else to put it. Like, the site's actually a small lot, and let me call it an acre. It is less than an acre. It is, it's flat only on the top, which is where the existing house is. And where we're replacing the existing house with the new house and replacing the garage. So it's very limited space to place, to do anything. We're proposing not to move the house. Like, one might say, hey, why don't you flip flop the house? I think that would be unreasonable. First, it would, it would create a bigger impact to the neighbor. Secondly, we, we get our water and electric service from, geez, I think, does it cross four? No, it crosses 289 Henry Barron's property to the south. So even our utilities come through a neighbor's property. So we're very happy to leave the house where it is. As a result, our garage is in the front yard, like many other properties, including one of the properties right next door.
I saw it, Robert, which is just one clarification. The lot is actually a little bit larger than an acre. I think it's like 1.3. We don't want to make any cause any confusions. But in, I think the board may remember last time, we also spoke about the fact that the actual recorded address is, as Robert said, because we use Slate Dock, it's in front. The address which we are changing on the tax documents is 391 Rhine Cliff Road, in which case the garage is next to the house, you know, and until, I think, you know, 20 years or something ago, actually, the driveway that was used came up through Rhine Cliff Road and across. But you know, since then, most of that driveway now is on the Barron's property. We still have about 10 feet of it. But that's also why logistically, it's really not practical to put it anywhere. But if you used the, one of the other two addresses, we're side by side, not in front.
And also to note, thank you, Donna. We forfeited the Rhine Cliff Road address just last year because we were told it was the responsible thing to do. Because if the fire, when you call 911, they will show up to Rhine Cliff Road and won't know how to get there. The truth is, they can get pretty darn close to the house on Henry Barron's driveway. But he wouldn't appreciate that. The third variance is the height of the accessory structure, which we talked about. In fact, we did add it to the renderings and, and I was, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's 28 foot on the backside because the grade drops off four feet and it's 24 feet on the west side where it faces the river. So I would, I would say it's basically a 24 foot high garage to the peak, or 28, I'm sorry, 24. But because we pushed the garage south and rotated it a little bit, pushed it south and east, it actually, the grade drops off. So we gained four more feet. So we're, we're really 28 feet exposed on the east side. So those are the three variances. We could, if you want to, we could go through the other photos. We went through them last time, if anyone would like to.
Yeah, just go through them briefly because the Barron's, I don't think we're here. And I know they're here and maybe they've seen them before, but it's good for them to see it. And this gets back to, and I know it's, you may, you may think I'm being a pain in the neck and picky. But the last time around, I know you said 28 feet is the height, but the last measurement I have is, again, it's pretty close, 27 feet, four and three quarter inches. So I, anyway, that's why it's so important. I know it's only inches and everything else. It's important to us. And so we want exact numbers. It's not a big deal to insert them. So anyway. So if you could just go through it just briefly for the Barron's, because I'm sure they're going to have some questions for you.
So this is a photo, actually, David Barron, thank you, David, provided this photograph. It's taken from the second floor of his house, looking out what I think is a bathroom window directly across his pool toward the river. And it shows, we've rendered where we planned to put the garage and rendered to the, as close as our ability allows us the height of it. And let's see, the next, this is one picture. We, the next picture shows, this is a drone photo taken looking over David's house at Forest Lake Dock, looking at the same garage, but also we included the house. Why? Because we thought that was appropriate and you would ask us to anyway. The planning board, I think, was a little more, they had more requests and were a little more demanding about wanting to see renderings. But we were, we're happy to have produced this without being asked. Let's see, the third rendering, this shows the existing house. And as I described earlier, I tried to make the new house short and it's, it's hard to squash things without making them look ugly. So where, what we've arrived at is a 24 foot tall house. The existing house is 24 foot eight. The new one is 24 foot eight. By the way, I'm looking at my, looking at my, and I sent these to Jim too, just to check my numbers. I'm sorry, I'm mistaken. 25 foot eight. The existing house and the new are 25 foot eight. So we haven't changed the height of the existing, of the house on site. Next rendering. This is a rendering of the house. You can see the two brown colored structures. These are taken from a vantage point of someone who might be canoeing or in a leisure boat and decided to come pretty close to shore. 100 yards, 150 yards off. Next render. This is from the middle of the river. I wanted to leave the houses in white so you can know, see where they are. And I was told, no, 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 color them brown. So from the middle of the river, you can't really see much at all. Let's see, is there a fifth photo? Rendering.
No, Robert, that's the last.
Yeah, great. So middle of the river was it. Great. Would you, Jim, would you like us to look at anything else before we take some questions from the board? Or do you want to look at the site plan? Is there?
That's, that's on my call.
Yeah, I'm fine with what has been produced so far. It's, it's what was produced the last time around. And again, it was a big improvement over the first time around. I'll ask my board, well, let me ask the public first. The Barron's are here, so feel free to ask questions. What we do ask is that you state your name and your address, and then direct the question or comments, whatever you have to the applicant, and hopefully they'll be answered to your satisfaction.
Hi, it's Dave Barron's at Forest Lake Dock Road. I guess the, the scenario that we've talked about or that we have been concerned about is the size of the accessory building and its impact upon our view. Our preference would be for that this new house and accessory building to hold to the current zoning laws. The question I do have, and I don't think it was answered the last time, this was at the planning board, in what I've read in the zoning laws, there's an 840 square foot accessory building or 25% of the main structure. And does that include a garage as square footage or just the above, above the structure in square footage? Okay, that's my question. Sure. So the zoning codes have, has, there is a section where all things good are defined. And in fact, one of the interesting definitions is that areas used to park vehicles are not counted for square footage of the building. So essentially, the garage area does not count. If I put an office or a shop in the garage, I would count that area. So actually, the accessory structure has an area of 528 square feet. And essentially, and there are other, there are other exceptions and deductions for, for area, and it's different for every job. In this case, the garage is 528 square feet. The house is 3512, so that gives us 15%, still, still quite a ways from 840 square feet or 25%. I would suggest- The house is 2512, right?
Yeah, it's 2512.
Not 3512.
Yes, yes.
Correct. I'm sorry. Okay. By the way, I anticipated David's questions. I'm computing these numbers knowing he was going to ask the question. So let me, let me go back to that. It's 500, 528 divided by 2512. 21, 21%. So we were, I think we went through lots of numbers and the Daniels weren't happy to squash everything down. In fact, they may not know, we're not done. Like, we're still, we'll still fine tune some things. And in fact, I hope go to David and his wife and if there's some slight adjustment, even if it's a foot, I think the Daniels will be happy to accommodate. But otherwise, they, I think they've done, they've been very nice to work with. And I've been allowed, I've pushed them to the, to what, from my point, was kind of a limit, like, but they said rightly so, like, we want a garage, like, come on, everyone has a garage. What we're doing is kind of normal. I wish their, I wish their topography was different, but I think they, they made, they made, they bent and moved the house and adjusted the garage to what we think is the, to the best, best, or least impact to Forest Lake Dock. And I do understand the garage, but it's essentially not the garage that's the, the point, the point of issue. It's really kind of a second dwelling on top of the garage. So you've got the garage, which is where you're saying doesn't count as square footage. But then above there is, I don't know, what'd you say, 528 square feet? That's above the garage. So you've got the garage at one story plus the additional story of the added, of the added building. So that's, that's, that's the point of contention, I would say most. You are correct. But the, if they took the second floor off or the, the, this useful space above the garage, the building could be shorter. I think though, spaces like this have become incredibly important to people to work from, to go exercise in, to get away from your, to get away from your 2,512 square foot house and spouse or children. Like, I'm in the end of my house right now and I have two doors between me and my family. My house is bigger than the Daniels. I don't know how they're going to work together at home. So I know they've talked about using this space in lots of different ways, like the kid comes up and can sleep over there. They get to work there. They can exercise there. So I think their requests are reasonable. And I know it's, it's a variance. That's why we're here looking for, looking, having moved it around and made the garage smaller. We're, we're asking for a variance for something that we think is reasonable.
Now, let me ask you this, and you may not have the numbers, but assuming you had a traditional roof on the garage instead of, you know, a living space, how would that reduce the height? Would it, would it be in conformity with the 20 feet? Or would it, you still need a variance, but a lesser variance?
Yes.
Yes, but if you can give me a reasonable approximation.
It would be in conformance. I would, 28 would, 24 would come down to 16, 17 feet and, and the back, even with the four foot delta is, is still probably at 20 feet. What, Robert, what's the allowed height? Or Jim?
Sorry, what was that, Catherine?
What's the allowed height? 20. 20. Okay.
Can I just ask a question? The height is being measured to the top of the bridge or to average?
I'm measuring from the lowest point on the ground, not even the average around. I'm measuring from the- I'm measuring from the lowest point on the ground, not even the average around. I'm measuring from the lowest point, which is on the Baron's side up to the top of the ridge. Um, and, and really the height, uh, what we're not, and I, I'm not showing, I'm showing vegetation, but actually we've already talked about adding more, knowing that that would be desirable for the neighbor. So, you know, David can tell us what kind of green tree he wants to look at, because we were happy to plant something and let it grow twelve or sixteen feet tall behind the garage. So it is the tallest height of the garage, twenty-eight feet.
I guess my question was, you know, if, if he, if he didn't have that eight feet, assuming that, you know, a traditional garage, you'd be at the twenty feet. Let's just assume that and you're asking for the, the eight feet. Um, to what degree does that extra feet impair the view from the Baron's property? And I don't.
I'm gonna say, you know, this is David, you'll, you won't love me for this, but not much, like that, that, the photo we show is taken from a second floor bathroom. His real view is from his beautiful deck on the back of his porch. I don't think there are, this is looking out the window, looking west and southwest. Let me call it west. His real view is looking between the maple and the other trees on the right, straight out. He has a nice water view from the second floor. I didn't, um, I didn't get photos from David of the, from his deck. Uh, nor did I ask to take them, but I think his primary view is, his house is facing northwest. So again, the reason we moved that garage to the left, to the south.
Yeah, and if you took the eight feet off the top, you'd still have, uh, an impaired view.
Oh wait, could you go back to that other photo? So David, we're blocking the oil tanks. We're blocking the oil tanks on the other side of the river. We should get credit for that. Yeah, actually, someone else pointed that out to me. It might have been Donna and we joked around about it, but I thought, no, that's a real, that's actually kind of nice, like, uh, and I don't, again, I don't know, um, from the first floor deck, from the rear deck in the summertime, what that view, what the view might be, but I, but I, it's my understanding and thought that the view is really what you're looking at to the right, northwest.
And, and Robert, I don't know if you recall, and we have not presented this to the committee, but we could, but we also had our architect sort of look at what he called the, the primary view and then the, the secondary view. Um, and the garage did not impact at all, sort of the ninety-degree primary view from the, from the first floor. It impacted fourteen percent. I think it was called the obtuse view, um, you know, overall. So, so what we were talking about for the garage with or without, you know, the, the second floor, if you just draw the line at the windows or not, about fourteen percent of an overall view, again, from, from that most often used, which is ground level. Um, and not, not in the primary line of sight. So, you know, as, as Robert said, we've, we've, we, we totally respect that if you have a view, you don't want one brick in, in its way, but you know, we also ask that we respected that. You know, we're, we're asking for a garage. We've made it smaller and we have moved it and, and we've, you know, tried very hard to compromise. And, and we think this is a fair compromise.
Uh, I wouldn't mind, uh, if you don't mind, um, seeing that, that information on the, uh,
Sure.
You know, the view shed. And, and you can just give that to Gretchen and she'll forward it on to us.
I think it's part of the submission.
Is it? Okay, it could be.
I'm looking, I'm looking for it, Scott, see if I can bring it up. I don't have it in the, the update file I got, but give me a second. I'll see if I can find it for.
Okay, but it was a part of the submission, Jim?
I have seen it. I don't remember if it was this or the planning board, but I know it's, let me see if I can find it.
I, I don't remember seeing it, but that does not mean it wasn't, it's not there.
Um, it's probably.
Let me ask the barons, um, do you have other questions and concerns that you would like to address now?
Scott? This is Rob, this is Robert Lonergan. I'm at four oh three Rhine Cliff Road. I wasn't able to get in before to tell you that I, I might have a question. And I do, and it's a very benign question, but I was wondering how far south on the property the house has moved. You know, you said before, Robert, uh, Murray said that it was going to move south. And is it, um, higher in that more southern location than it was before? From ground level?
No, I think we did not change the, we did not change the height. What we did do was create some rock excavation for ourselves, but I think we, we basically just slid it sideways and as I noted earlier, we, I've computed to the, to, to within what I think is an inch. The, the height of the building is the same as the existing that is there now.
Yeah, the other part of my question was how far south did it move?
Yeah, it's, it's within the setback, so maybe it moved five or six feet.
Okay.
It's still within, and I purposely kept it one foot away from the setback. So that I don't find myself being accused of going over the line.
Okay, thank you.
For seventy questions that they'd like to ask at this time.
Uh, can you pull up that picture of the actual building? Is that a staircase going up on the north side of that? Of the garage slash living area up on top?
That is, that is staircase. That's the access to the second floor.
Is there a reason why you have it on that side and not on the other side?
You know, I think, I think the owners.
Open up more view for them.
Yeah, okay. You know, I might, I don't want to volunteer the Daniels. They might be happy with that. I think, uh, I think they might be fine. I think part of the plan was to be able to, when you pull out of the single car garage in the house, you back out to turn around next to the garage. And I said, ah, you, no one wants to hit the, hit the stairs.
Yeah, sure.
So.
Which way do you enter the garage with your car? On the south? How do you went to the garage with your car on the south?
Oh, which garage? The, the?
Well, the garage that we're looking at right now on the picture, that's a garage.
From the opposite side, from the west.
From the riverside.
On the west.
Yeah, from the riverside. We can, we can talk about moving the stair, stairwell to the other side, uh, to the south side of the house, if that helps. Um, but I think the concern was, as Robert said, kind of the, kind of the, just like cars moving in and out or like a, the UPS truck, we wanted to make sure that we weren't, someone wasn't going to hit that staircase.
A little bit more.
Yeah, no, it's a fair point. Yeah, sure.
Jim, um, Scott, the, the first plan might be useful to, to show both the board and the public.
Well, I did, I did find that view shed sheet. Again, I don't know if it came to the ZBA or the planning board. Um, I think I have my planning board file. Do you want to see that, Scott?
Uh, sure, or if, if it's not, yeah, you can show it. And then if it's not in our, ours, then I'd like to make it a part of the record for, for us as well. I mean, that's what we're talking about here.
Right.
I, uh, Tim, I, I, I do like that idea of, and, and I'm not saying it has to be done, but exploring perhaps moving that staircase if it, if it's feasible. Uh, given, you know, and, and by the way, we're all going to be out there, cause this is a, uh, uh, an interesting application and, um, it will be able to see for ourselves, but that, I think that could be anything that we can do to reduce and mitigate is helpful.
But, you know, it's a tough, um, there are lots of lines here in colors purposely to, to wow you, so you get confused. Um, but really I, I want to point to the orientation of Forest Lake Dock is northwest. And we, we were, we looked at it and, and in fact, I want to say this, I think this site plan does not reflect, oh, it does reflect the shift. The direct view out the back, it's, it's not in what we called the primary view. Uh, yes, if you look to the left or the west, you see the garage. Uh, but part of our reason for moving it was to get away from what we called the primary view.
Was, was there a specific reason that, was there a specific reason the garage couldn't come a little closer to the house?
The garage?
Yeah, how, what's the distance between the house and the garage at this point?
Yeah, maybe, um, actually, the final grading plan and site plan is also attached. Uh, it was part of the, uh, two sixteen submission, Jim.
Hey, I'm jumping around in files here. I'll see if I can find it. Give me a second.
Thanks.
But it, so Robert, do you know the approximate distance between the two buildings?
No, but I'd have to pull out some papers or snap on some numbers. I'm not that quick or talented.
Okay.
Um, I'll tell you what drove it though. If it's too, we, moving the garage was tricky. You don't want to pull out of the house, single car garage and hit the two car garage. It's either maneuverable or it's silly. And actually, many people plan their driveway or they don't plan, I should say, their driveway and their garage. And they discover only after it's built that it doesn't work very well. And I think, um, so this, you can see this plan here. You can see our two car garage and you can see the, the gravel drive and you can see the solid lines that define the edge of the driveway. So as you come in, you turn to the left, as you're coming up the driveway, you turn and enter into the two car garage if you want to. Or you can continue straight and drive into the one car garage. And if you, once you're in the one car garage, you back out into the space on the south side of the two car garage. That was my reason for not putting the stair there. In fact, the stair is more functional because it's closer to the house. So if the barons, if that would make the barons, uh, feel better, I think the Daniels would be willing, probably happy to move it to the left, to the south side.
I see, I had forgotten there was a one car garage under there. Yeah.
And. Our driveway is pretty functional. I mean, I should say the improvements to the driveway are functional. The, the driveway is of course an existing driveway and everything from the maple tree to the north. Um, there's no real strong desire to, to change it. I mean, if, if, I think Tom would love to make it, to improve it. Because it, it's steep, it's a, uh, it doesn't exceed fifteen percent. But in, in, down near the road, it exceeds six percent. And so, uh, he has thoughts of making improvements in the future, but otherwise he's going to enjoy using it as an existing driveway.
Jim is, uh, what you put up, i- i- is that part of the ZBA file? Uh, because I, I, I can't find it in, in my stuff, so.
February sixteenth.
Yes, this, this one was listed as the, uh, SDR plans. They came with this information, so that, that was.
I have those things. I have those, uh, anyway, all right.
And the house, this Dave Barron's again, in the house and accessory building with regard to the property lines needs, so twenty feet, I see on the accessory building, twenty feet, is that, is that the, the, the zoning code? And then on the other house to the, um, to the other Baron's house, um, what's the corner of that is, is what to what, to, up to that property line? Uh, if you, if you pan, um, up, I think, Jim, it should be twenty-five. There it is. So in fact, as I noted earlier, it's twenty feet. I made it twenty-one feet for the garage. The house has a setback of twenty-six feet from the rear or south slot line. Um, why? Safety. A one foot safety buffer. Okay. As you can see, I mean, in a perfect world, I push that garage further east. Giving a more clear shot into the garage. I think it's very reasonable. It's very functional and reasonable. No one's parking a big truck in the house. That's for some little car, probably Tom's little car. But it, so it's, so it's very functional. And this is, this is Dave Barron's again. I guess my other, my only other question of, of the evening. Is there any difference in consideration for a house versus an accessory building in what I would say is in looking at someone's view? So in, in looking at someone's view, is there a difference between a, a formal first structure and the accessory building? So does that, is there a difference in the, in the way that the view is reviewed? Or the, the, the way that the view is considered under those two scenarios? Well, it's funny, I don't think the code goes, goes specifically to talk about preserving views so much as it stays more general and talks about impact. And the impact is not just to community and people driving down Rhine Cliff Road. Uh, yes, it's to adjacent neighbors. So do I think, do I think a house could have a negative impact? Yeah, I guess so.
So the, the, the standards for review of the, the view shed come from the RCO, the Rhine Cliff overlay. Um, tho- those are the standards that talk about maintaining consistency within the Rhine Cliff overlay and, um, you know, view shed issues, um, considerations, things like that. Uh, and that would be standard across the board.
Yeah, it, it doesn't make a difference whether it's, the, the view shed is being affected by a garage or by a house, it's whether it's being affected.
And I might, I might add though, um, I mean, doing anything, you can put a mailbox up and you're affecting someone's view as you drive down the road. So I think we're here to talk about what is reasonable. And again, I'd say I think the Daniels and I have been talking about and planning this for a year. Um, I think we've arrived at what we feel is reasonable. Which, what program and as amassing.
Um, Robert, could you tell me the dimensions of the second story, uh, on the garage and the ceiling height?
Uh, the ceiling height is vaulted, so it's cathedral. Uh, the walls would be eight foot tall and then it goes into a pyramid shape, so it's open ceiling. Um, the size is shown on the plan and I think I have it also on the application. Let's see, Jim, could you show me that, uh?
So it's the, they're eight, they're eight feet at the, uh, at the lowest level and then they vault up, right?
No, well, let's see, the ceiling in the garage is, I noted eight foot three and a quarter. That's a function of standard garage overhead doors being mounted on the ceiling and all that. Uh, that's kind of pretty normal. And then on the, on the second floor, the, you can see in this image, there's a door on the side of the garage. That's a standard door, so I can't make that wall too short, otherwise I can't get a standard door there. So I bet I could reduce it a couple of inches, but I think we're looking to do normal construction. So we're, we're proposing to build what is pretty industry standard.
Robert, I'd just like to go back to the, the question earlier about the setbacks and just confirm that the setbacks you showed on the plan are the setbacks for the RM one district, the twenty and twenty-five feet. So they are consistent with the setback requirements. Just want to confirm that.
Now, um, I did indicate that, I think, I know I am Catherine and, and maybe all of the members are going to go out for a site inspection. Um, I, I was wondering if, uh, and this is a little, uh, unusual of a request. Aside from, you know, going out and looking at the property itself, which is what we standardly do. Um, and this is kind of addressed to the barons. Uh, would you be willing to allow us to come onto your property so we could get a, a vantage point? Uh, because we're talking about your view shed to see, you know, kind of get an idea from, from where you are, from where you're situated.
Yes, absolutely. Um, s- somebody's usually home at the house, so yeah, just as you guys formalize and, and work through the timing, yeah, just keep us in the loop.
It'll, it'll probably be a weekend, um, I just because, like, am I the only one who's still working? Yeah, I think the rest, even though Richard is too.
Some important people are working.
Yeah, the employee, a couple of people have to still work, so, uh, it's a weekend deal for, for Richard and I, but, um, I think it would be important and we don't usually do this. Um, I've, I've done in the past sparingly, but in this case, I think it makes sense to be on the Baron's property and, and walk around and, um, and, and walk around and, um, and, and be able to see what's what.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can all coordinate that.
And, and I know we've talked about this before, but, uh, just for the, the Danielson for Robert, everything will need to be staked out in terms of what the garage is, where the stairs are, whatever side they're on and where the edge, you know, the, where the house will be.
That is not really fair, but I would say luckily I've already staked it out, but it represents the first location. So I will, in preparation, move the markers to the correct location for the garage.
That's really all we need the stakes for is, is for the garage.
Okay.
In, in the first meeting, we talked about.
Don't we need to see where the, or I'd like to see, let me put it that way. I'll just speak for myself. I'd like to see where the edge of the house is in relation to where the edge of the garage is.
I will take the two corners, the two north corners of the house also.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Is it, is it possible to look at or get a, like a story pole put up? To see how high that would be as, as that gets staked out?
Not really, it's twenty eight feet. Uh, I mean, y- you could build a mockup, but that would be a big undertaking.
Yeah, that, yeah, I, I haven't seen that. We, we haven't had, we haven't had that. I'm not saying it can't be done, but I've never asked, uh, somebody to do that in the eighteen years I've been on the, you know, doing this, so. I don't know, I, um, maybe we can think of some, something that would, would help give an idea of what the, uh, twenty eight feet would, would be. I'm not sure what.
Scott, the only, the only thing I've ever seen done is a balloon test to get a helium balloon and run it up the distance. The, the only issue with that is if, if there's even a little bit of a breeze, you're, you're not going to get a completely accurate one, but we have, we have done that before for other, for other things. Um, it's, it's not great. It's not great, but it does provide some perspective as long as you don't have a lot of wind, but that's about the extent of anything I've ever seen for this, you know, an, an issue like this. Certainly not, certainly not a mockup or anything like that.
When the wind blows, then the garage looks shorter.
Well, at least it, it'll give some perspective. Maybe we'll, we'll be able to see twenty four, twenty five feet versus the twenty eight. It can't hurt.
Good idea, Jim.
Can't hurt to try it.
It, it is, it is a cheap and easy way to try. If it doesn't work, it's a couple bucks. It's not, uh, shouldn't be a major undertaking if we can get a helium balloon.
If, if you know when you're going to do that, let us know and we can go up and we can even spring for the helium balloons. Yeah, well, it, it'll probably be, not this weekend, but maybe in the next, you know, couple of weekends, what, whatever's convenient for everybody, assuming the barons are available, uh, you guys are available, Robert's available.
Um, Miss, Mr. Barron's, if, if you could give me the, or give Gretchen a proper contact information for who you want to contact for your part of the visit. And Robert, should I work through you for?
In fact, I sent Gretchen a note today welcoming, uh, anyone. In fact, I said, hey, this Saturday, Sunday, or next Wednesday are good days. If those don't work, uh, Saturday, I think may be rainy. But otherwise, I'll, I'll probably plan on Saturday or early Sunday to move the stakes.
Catherine, this is Jim. I, I've offered to help schedule these and we're doing all members just to, so that I can be the point of contact. So you don't have to be doing the emails back and forth, so I can coordinate with you and then maybe you can coordinate with the applicants and we'll, we'll try at least get some, some dates pulled together so we can split up the work a little. If that works, if that works for you.
I'll work with the ZBA members and figure something out and tell you, and you can work with the Danielson and the Barons.
I was thinking the other way around, but either way it works for me. I'll, we'll do that. You, you work with the members and we'll, I'll work with Gretchen. We'll get it scheduled. Yep.
Okay. All right. Yeah, whichever way. Okay.
Right. Uh, David, do you have any other questions?
No, I think, I think we've covered the, the questions that, uh.
Yeah, that does not mean you can't ask questions at the, you know, uh, when we're out there and everything else and, you know, this does not finish any questioning. So if you think of some other things when we all meet, uh, and that may not be a bad idea either for everybody, you know, to be out there at the same time, just so we, you know, casually. In these type of situations, which we've had in the past, the more communication between the neighbors, the better.
Yeah, it's, it's worked out really well in the, the other couple of times that, that we were trying to involve the neighbors in the discussion.
Right, I don't have any other questions, but let me ask my board members. Any other questions, concerns?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, the sewage, is that part of the Rhine Cliff sewage system?
Uh, no, there is no public sewer here. Um, in fact, the septic, uh, does, the septic disposal system design was designed by Renia Engineering in two thousand fifteen. Uh, it is, it is, let me describe it as to be built down the slope on the only two flat areas, meaning less than fifteen percent. You can see there.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the expansion area, I think, and then further down or one, one is um, just further across the plan is another, so there are really very few areas and those are the two. They've been designed and, and re-approved last year.
So that's for the additional bathroom also?
Yeah, in fact, I think they were designed, Donna, you might remember, five bedrooms or six bedrooms. It was, it's designed for.
Yeah, the previous owner, it was approved for six bedrooms.
Yeah, the Art of Building had it approved originally, so we extended that permit, but they were building, they were hoping to build something much larger, I think, than what we're talking about.
Last chance for this evening. Any questions, concerns of anybody? We can, I, well, obviously you have lots of questions when we go out there on site. Anything else? All right, um, not hearing any. What I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing, but it's subject to getting those couple of numbers in that application.
By Friday. By Friday. Do you hear that Gretchen? By Friday.
Yes.
So, uh, anyway, uh.
Scott?
Yes.
Robert Lonergan.
Hi, Mr. Lonergan, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Uh, would, uh, we be getting any notification in advance of when you propose to be out there?
If you want to come, the more the merrier.
Okay, but, uh, we have to know when that would be, so how would be best, best way to do that?
Best way to do that is to give Gretchen your contact information.
Okay.
And, and she's the zoning board clerk, also the planning board clerk. And so you can just contact her at, um, at Town Hall and give her that information and then we'll coordinate with you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'm making that motion subject, uh, to the, um, cleanup on the, uh, the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, let the record reflect that everybody, uh, uh, agreed with closing the public hearing subject to, um, a cleanup on the application. And, um, we'll take care of getting everybody available, uh, for one day to go out and, um, walk around and, and see what's what and, and be able to ask, uh, the final round of questions. So I just want to say thank you for everybody, um, uh, being so helpful. I also want to say thank you, uh, and I mean this because I've been doing this a long time. Um, everybody has been, uh, businesslike, civil. And I know, uh, it's, this is important to everybody. Uh, and sometimes feelings, um, uh, get to better folks and they don't act as well as they should, but you guys have been great so far. So let's keep it up and, um, and work this thing out. All right.
Good.
And we'll see each other buddy soon. See everybody soon. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, so the next matter on is, uh, Doherty. Uh, Mr. Doherty, are you here just to give us an idea of? Is he here?
So Doherty, are you here?
Yes.
Orla?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me now? Can we, can we see your, there you are.
Oh, hey.
All right.
We're bringing a lot.
So, uh, let me, let me ask, is there anybody here for, uh, this, uh, the Doherty, uh, application? All right, don't take it as an. So, Mr., um, Doherty, uh, but that, that happens quite a bit. Uh, people do not, there's no public interest, but that does not mean that we, uh, don't want to hear from you again. So if you can just briefly, we know the case pretty well. It's a pretty simple one, but if you could just kind of go over it real quick.
Well, yeah, um, I had, uh, uh, renovated the house, uh, we bought it in twenty sixteen and working, we were living someplace else and the, the house had sat, um, for like two years unoccupied and was in need of some real renovation. So it took me about four years, you know, having to work and then, you know, going to the house at night to finish it. And I had, uh, um, building permits and everything was all. So then we decided that, uh, we moved in and something came up and we decided we had to move, um, family reasons. And, um, I looked at the front of the house and it wasn't very appealing to the eye. So, um, I, uh, got some uh, ideas from a, a con. Just put on a perley, well, you won't need a building permit because it's not attached to the house, which I still don't know if it's true or not. But, uh, and then that would have, if I had applied for the building that would have made me realize that it would be violating the zoning. It was just trying to make it more pleasing to the eye, you know, I, I don't know if you, you have the before picture.
Yes, we've seen the before and after. Yep.
But. Yeah, yeah. So that, that's pretty much the story. It's.
Okay.
Didn't do my due diligence and this is what I get.
All right, well, um, all is not lost. Um, so, uh, any questions, concerns from the board members about, uh, this application to get a variance for the pergola, which is already in place?
I don't.
Okay, I don't either. All right, um, and anybody last call from, uh, the, uh, the public?
Sorry, uh, I'm not hearing any, uh, voices. I, um, make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Let the record reflect that all the board members have voted in the affirmative. Uh, Mr. Doherty, we have sixty-two days from today in order to give you a resolution on this. And we will do so, um, I am confident by the next meeting, uh, which is, um, April sixteenth, no, uh.
Twentieth.
Twentieth, April twentieth. Are you available on the twentieth? Okay, actually, you don't even have to be available on the twentieth. What we'll do is, uh, since we've closed the public hearing, uh, well, I'm pretty sure have a resolution on the twentieth, which we'll read into the record. However, uh, you do not have to be here. You can be present if you wish. Uh, but, um, we'll, we'll have an answer for you. I'm, I'm very confident on April twentieth.
Um, is the, is the pergola easily visible from the street or do we think we need to schedule a site visit?
It looks like it's pretty.
Yeah. It's right there.
Okay, so I, I think people can just go by.
By, yeah. We can do drive bys.
Okay.
All right, great. Well, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mr. Doherty.
All right, the next one we have is, um, and I know I'm going to get this wrong and I apologize. Uh, Tetaconda?
That's correct.
Wow. Okay. Um, is there anybody from the public, uh, present on this application?
Okay. Uh, and uh, I'm sorry, I, I, uh, let's see.
You're WWA?
Yes, I'm Wendy. Wendy.
Wendy, okay. I always like to call people by their, their names and not WWA, so.
Yes, that's appreciated.
It just makes it more pleasant. Anyway, um, uh, we, we have a pretty good idea of what you want to do here, but even though there's no public present, uh, if you could just, uh, refresh the board members as to, uh, what, um, uh, you want to do here. I know, I believe I am the person who is, uh, assigned to this. And, uh, and I'll be definitely making a site inspection. I, I typically do it after the end of the, um, a public hearing. So if you could just kind of go over, uh, you know, you don't have to go chapter and verse, but just.
Um, so the Tetacondas would like to add a poolhouse, a detached garage and a utility shed to their site. Um, it's a thirty-nine acre site, uh, completely invisible to all neighbors and the road. Uh, the utility shed is going to be, um, enclosing existing uh, equipment on a pad. We're just adding walls, different walls and a roof. And actually you have the old presentation there.
Yes.
I did add some, um.
Let me find the new one, sorry. So Wendy, what did you add? Yep, one second, I will pull that up.
While you're looking, I'll just continue on with my description. So the utility shed is closer to the, uh, fronting road than the house. Um, by sorry, uh, thirty-eight feet. Um, yes, there we go. So that's a little view of the shed, so it'll have wood cladding similar to the house. It's a gray color. The house is painted, but we're going to be doing a, a natural stain on wood and it's slatted to allow for air circulation around the existing equipment. Um, and it's the same size as the pad that's there. Um, we may be able to make it a little bit smaller. I don't know if that would impact any, anything for, on your end, but so that's the first accessory, uh, building, which, um, is our first area variance to be discussed, which is that it's closer to the road than the house.
Yeah, and, and Wendy, any, anytime, uh, just I, I apologize for interrupting you, but even if it's miniscule, uh, any reduction in the request for variance is always preferable.
Okay.
If, if it's reasonable, I mean, for you.
Sure. Honestly, I didn't look very closely to see if it could be tightened up. Perhaps when you're there on site, we could just look at it and, you know, see if it seems reasonable. Um, the second, the second variance is, uh, that our total accessory building area will be um, four thousand six hundred and sixty square feet, which is in excess of the fifteen hundred. Um, and so I've shown you guys, um, renderings and elevations of the three proposed buildings, the poolhouse, the garage and the shed. Um, and that's basically why we're here. That's the poolhouse location. There's the garage.
The garage, the garage is going to be built around the stone wall, as I recollect.
Within the stone wall, yes. If you go down one more page, you'll see the little building rendering, uh, three D.
Is that something that you added?
The stone wall was there already. Um, there's parking there already, so they're just going to build the little building within the stone walls.
No, no, I know, but I, I just wasn't sure if, and I'm just looking through the stuff that I have here quickly and I didn't receive, I didn't, I don't know if I had asked for that, or if it it was something that you added, the the rendering uh of the actual garage within the walls of the.
You guys asked for additional renderings, or perhaps, perhaps it was the preplant. No, it was you guys, yes. You guys asked for the additional red, so I did renderings of the garage.
Great, yeah, cuz I I don't, I I mean, it looks great, but it it's just, I I don't remember seeing it, that's all, so.
It's new to you today, or or from the twenty-eighth submission.
Okay, so um uh yeah, obviously Gretchen will get those uh to us, so 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 we have that. Cuz I know we had the poolhouse, which looks very nice.
Yes, you have the poolhouse. Now you have all three.
Okay, great. Before I forget, do weekends work okay for you or work okay for the applicant? Okay.
Yes, um they're sort of in and out of town, but I'm flexible to meet you.
Okay. All right, and I'll um I'll probably take the lead on this, cuz I'm I'm definitely going to go out. I'll be writing up this resolution.
Okay, great.
But let me ask my uh board members, do you guys have any um and lady um have any um uh questions, concerns, comments for Wendy?
I don't.
I just, no, I have a question, just uh go going back to the garage. Was there any thought of doing the garage and having that stone wall be part of the garage, like building it on top of that stone wall?
Well, um it's not suitable to be a structural wall, so we're going to be building it with um insulated concrete forms, which is those CMU blocks that you pour concrete into a little um foam form. So that will give us the best chance of um waterproofing right up tight against that existing wall. So it's not structurally performing anything, but it's still going to be retaining the earth behind it and on the sides. And obviously, we'll still be there visually and sort of hide the garage a little bit, so it'll be nestled in there.
Yeah, it works. It looks good.
Yeah, no, it does. Any other questions, concerns? Since we don't have any questions, concerns um or comments, uh I'll make a motion that we um uh close the public hearing. Do I have a second? Okay, any uh uh all all in favor? I, I, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, let the record reflect that uh everybody was in favor of that. So uh Wendy, I'll be in contact with you and I presume I'll probably have uh one or more of my board members come out. We'll make it on on one occasion. Meaning for you and um we do have sixty-two days to do res- a resolution from today, but I am confident that uh we will have a resolution for you on um April twentieth, if I recall correctly, the next uh the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So you you'd like the building staked out, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so when do you think the earliest you might visit is?
Yeah, um is and when you say building, the 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 poolhouse.
Yes, the poolhouse.
Okay.
The front corners of the garage.
The poolhouse is is going to be important because I don't, there's nothing there, as I recollect.
No, there's nothing there.
And the other little shed is just really defined by the size of the pad, right?
It is, yes. There's existing screen wall around it, so it'll be exactly that same size, just taller with the roof. So that one's easy. Um I will ask the contractor, I will meet the contractor out to stake the the buildings. Um, do you think there's any chance you're going to want to come this weekend, or do I have this weekend?
I think you have this weekend to stake, uh because it sounds like we're going to be going out to um um was it the Daniels? Uh we'll be going out to their place maybe this weekend on Sunday or something. And so we'll maybe get you the next weekend.
Okay, that sounds perfect.
All right.
Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night. All right, uh next we have Heinz. Hey Seth.
Good evening.
Good evening. So um anyway, uh you've been through this before and I understand that um your lesser half is somewhere else.
Yes, Mark is traveling, so we're switching it up today, uh giving you a little variety in presentation.
Well, it's it's um it it's 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 very nice. So uh anyway, uh if you could just briefly take us through the Heinz um application and um and we have a pretty good idea of of, you know, wh- what you want to do, but if, and and by the way, it doesn't look like anybody is here from the public sense, it's just us and
Okay.
But just briefly go through it and then um if there's any questions or concerns, people will ask.
Certainly, uh Jim, I think it might be helpful if we could just pull up the site plan. Great. Uh you know, so Seth Stickle with uh Mark Kraminsky, P E L S P C, uh representing Chris and Laura Hines, the owner and applicants uh that reside at five twenty-four Mill Road. Uh the subject parcel is thirty-seven point six nine six acres, and it is a corner lot with frontage to the north along Morton Road and frontage to the east along Mill Road. This is located in the HP twenty zoning district. Um, the uh project was part of a an approved site plan and special use permit application in twenty twenty-one with the planning board. Since that time, uh the owner and applicant uh have considered some additional site improvements um that require a site plan amendment application with the planning board. Included in those site improvements is a proposed garage with breezeway being added to the north end of the existing barn on the property. Jim, maybe you could just zoom into that area? Or just yet, that's where it is. Um uh it it was originally proposed to utilize a portion of the existing barn as the garage. Uh but in consideration of the barn's historic characteristics, the decision was made uh to cite the garage adjacent to the barn. Um the result of this placement of the garage in this area, the unique layout of the existing buildings and its interaction with those, and the fact that this is a corner lot has brought us in front of this board. Um, uh so we are asking for consideration of an area variance for the placement of an accessory structure projecting closer to the fronting street than the principal dwelling. Um, this is section uh one twenty-five, twenty-seven A three. And uh as uh in your consideration of this, uh we will be allowed to go forward with our application with the planning board. Uh the existing uh primary principal dwelling is nine hundred and eighty-five feet from Morton Road. The proposed garage is seven hundred and forty-eight point seven feet from Morton Road. The difference, the delta is the very, the variance request.
Um, that's nine hundred and eighty-five and seven forty-eight, what?
Point seven.
Point seven.
Seven forty-eight point seven, and and that is also dimensioned on this site plan as well for uh future reference.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any other, any questions, concerns? Comments? The uh the renderings are very nice.
Yeah.
Um and is this um all state success?
Um, you know, I will confirm that it has been staked in the field. Um and uh once we get uh scheduling for the site visit, we'll certainly make sure that it's stayed prior to that.
Okay.
Yeah, Catherine, I think this is yours. You have another one.
I know, I somehow I managed to raise my hand twice.
Or you didn't decline fast enough.
I get, yeah, one or the other.
One or the other.
And she's also nice enough to be helping me.
In for a penny, in for two pounds.
She's, she's, and she's an angel. I mean, I'm telling.
Yes, she is. You know, I I have a question. I if if you, you know, this is just me not knowing the laws here. But if if you were not changing the driveway, and if that addition was not closer to Mill Road, would you have to come before us?
Uh well, it's, I think the unique aspect of this being a corner lot is what uh what what presents the problem. So we have frontage along both Mill and Morton Road. Um so Mill Road, we are compliant. Unfortunately, Morton Road, uh we are asking for the variance.
Huh, even though your address is on only on one of those streets, they still consider it?
A corner lot has frontage in two sides of of the.
It doesn't matter.
It it has, a corner lot has two front yards regardless, but in this case, even with the prior planning board approval, the driveway is actually being moved to Morton from Mill Road. So technically, that becomes
Oh.
the front of the street. If if you look at it from the fact of where they're taking access, but yeah, as a corner lot, it still has two front yards by the by the zoning code. That's the case in pretty much every zoning code out there. A corner lot has two front yards.
And and historically, that's the way it's always been interpreted, but I remember that, yeah, Mark said that they're moving the driveway, so um it doesn't seem as um unfair or strange.
Um, I don't have any other questions. It seems pretty straightforward, pretty complete.
Yeah. There yourself or or Mark or the folks to contact about going out there?
Absolutely, yeah. We'll coordinate uh through Gretchen and Jim uh to to make sure that we can uh get you guys out onto the business site.
Okay.
Thanks, Seth.
Great.
Absolutely. All right, um. Not hearing any other questions, concerns um or comments. Uh I will make a motion that we uh close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? None? Abstained? None? So all approved? Okay, uh so Seth, that means um, you know, we have sixty-two days to render a resolution. I'm sure uh it'll be done by the the next meeting on the twentieth. And and uh before that time, obviously, you know, one or more of us, probably a couple of us will be out there for the site inspection, so uh we'll let you know, we'll coordinate it and uh and thank you for to uh your your time tonight.
Excellent, thank you.
All right.
I may stay on and and listen to the next uh reading of resolution, but that's all. Thank you.
Okay, you you you're you're more than welcome. It's duller than dishwater, but if you want to do that.
I I really enjoy them, so.
And and it's nothing against him. It's nothing against him. It's just the nature of the beast. It's just.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Tim, now that I've insulted you.
Yeah, well, I threw some good ones in here, so. Ready?
Uh yeah, let me just grab my version of it that I got. All right, so take us through it.
Thanks, Jim.
Yep, this is the PDF Tim sent out earlier, just for reference.
Uh so this is the resolution, the Town of Rhinebeck Zoning Board of Appeals in the matter of the area variance applicant of T Court L L C Phase Three. ZBA Case Number one zero two four. Whereas, background applicant, the applicant is T Court LLC referred to hereafter as the applicant. This appeal is from the uh from the Town of Rhinebeck Interzoning Enforcement's Officers Determination letter dated January third, two thousand twenty-two. Property involved, this appeal involves property located at one ninety-five River Road in the Town of Rhinebeck and which bears the tax partial number one three five zero eight nine dash six zero seven zero dash zero zero dash six eight zero eight three two. The applicant's property is fifty-five point zero nine six acres in area and is located in the HP dash twenty zoning district. Representation, the applicant is represented before this board by Mark R. Kraminsky of the firm Mark R. Kraminsky, P E L S P C located at thirteen Elm Street, Red Hope, New York, one two five seven one. Description of proposed project. The applicant's project is described as follows. Construct a model train round uh model train roundhouse and train car barn, guest house, three-bay garage and mudroom addition, service garage, all of which are proposed to be located closer to the fronting street than the principal dwelling. In addition, the applicant proposes to construct a twenty-eight-foot-tall treehouse with elevated walkway running east from the treehouse to grade approximately thirty feet as drawn titled Treehouse, Town of Rhinebeck, September twenty, two thousand twenty-one by Murray Engineering. Number of area variants required, the applicant can requires two area variances. Area variance number one, the first area variance sought by the applicant is pursuant to the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law section one twenty-five dash twenty-seven A one, which states that no accessory structure shall exceed twenty feet in height in any residential district. The applicant's proposed treehouse will be a total of twenty-eight feet, height of twenty-eight feet. And therefore, the applicant requests a variance of eight feet per treehouse. Area variance number two. The second area variance sought by the applicant is from the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law section one two five dash twenty-seven A three, which states that except for agricultural structures, guest house or ca- caretaker's dwellings, uh excuse me, except for agriculture, guest house cottages or caretaker's dwelling, no accessory structure shall either project closer to the fronting street than the principal building on the lot or be located within a required front yard. A guest cottage or caretaker's dwelling must, however, meet the minimum setback requirements for the zoning district. The applicant requests the above variants to construct a model railroad building in addition to the guest house and service garage, which all will be located closer to River Road than the principal dwelling. The model railroad building will include a round building used as steaming bays measuring twenty-five, uh this is a twenty-five feet, I put deep, that's not on that copy, but it should be deep with circular covered building area, having an inner circumference of approximately forty-six feet, ten inches and an outer circumference of ninety-three feet, that should be feet and six inches. Uncovered circumference of approximately twenty-three feet, four inches with an outer circumference of fifty feet. Five inches, car barn, uh the car barn measuring twenty-one feet by seventy-three feet and a covered waiting area built uh between round building and car barn measuring twenty feet by twenty uh twenty feet by twenty-five feet as drawn on the submitted plans Astor Courts Roundhouse and Car Barn drawn by De Bazy, I think that's right, architects dated August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. The building will be located to the northeast of the principal building and will be closer to the fronting street than the principal dwell uh building. See drawings, site plan Phase Three, overall site plan drawn by Mark R. Kraminsky, P E L S P C dated December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. The attached garage will be twenty-five feet by thirty-six feet, six inches with an attached mud room. I don't know, I just have one there. So room, mud room, measuring approximately ten feet, eight inches by twelve feet, six inches, as drawn by De Bazy Architects titled Tea House, Guest House, New Attached Garage, dated June twentieth, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty. The mud room will connect the new garage with the guest house. The building will be located to the northeast of the principal building and will be closer to the fronting street than the principal building. See drawing site plan Phase Three Overall Site Plan drawn by Mark R. Kraminsky, P E L S P C dated December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. The service garage will be thirty-six feet by sixty feet as drawn by De Bazy Architects titled Astor Courts Service Garage Service Garage dated fifteen, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The building will be located to the east of the principal building and will be closer to the fronting street than the principal building. See drawing site plan phase three overall site plan drawn by Mark R. Graminsky P E L S P C dated December twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. As the above-mentioned buildings will be located close to the fronting street than the principal dwelling and thus requiring an area variance pursuant to the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law section one twenty-five dash twenty-seven A three. See drawing site plan phase overall site plan drawn by Mark R. Graminsky P E L S P C dated December twenty thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. The all uh these buildings will not be viewable from River Road or neighboring properties. Z B A review, timeliness of of appeal. The applicant filed an appeal with his board on January third, two thousand twenty-two and has paid the requested fee. The pew, the appeal was filed with uh within sixty days of the date of the Z E's Z E O's terminate determination appealed from, and thus the applicant is timely as we uh required by section one twenty-five dash one twenty-five B of the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. Acceptance acceptance of the application as complete on January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This board deemed the application to be complete and accepted it for review by this board. C. Cr. After accepting this appeal. Sorry, I guess I'm in my eye. Uh we determined that this matter should be classified as a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, C. Cr. Because of of the project proposed proposed action involves type-two, the granting of individual setback and lot line variance and adjustments. Uh chapter six, N Y C R R, section six one seven point five C sixteen. No further review. Review is required pursuant of C. Cr. Public hearing schedule or uh public hearing schedule referrals and responses. The board scheduled the public hearing on February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. And directed the secretary to provide notice of the public hearing in accordance with the requirements of section one twenty-five dash one twenty-five D of the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law and to refer the application to the following. Duchess County Planning Board Department, we determined that this applicant was not required to be referred to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Economic Development pursuant of section two-three-nine dash M of the New York State General Municipal Municipal Law and section one twenty-five dash one twenty-five E of the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board as required by section one twenty-five dash one twenty-five E of the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. This application was referred to the Towning Plan Town Planning Board on January, which I didn't have a date in there, but it's twenty-one of two thousand twenty-two. The Town Planning Board responded on February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two and responded and requested variance and requested variances raises no significant planning or environmental concerns and recommend that the Z B A rely on its own study of facts, including consideration of the input of neighboring property owners. Town of Rhinebeck Conservation Advisory Board Waterfront Advisor and Waterfront Advisory Committee. We determined that this application was required to be referred to the Town of Rhinebeck Conservation Advisory Board C A P pursuant to chapter nine, sections nine dash five A one, nine dash five A eight A and nine dash six A of the Town of Rhinebeck Town Code because the application proposes the use and development of open space and the Town of Rhinebeck Water Advisory Committee pursuant of chapter one one eight of the Town of Rhinebeck Tone Town Code Waterfront Consistency Review. Because the land upon which the project is proposed lies within the town's coastal area and because the proposed action is not a minor action as such is defined in chapter one one eight. The town of uh the town W A C and C A B responded on February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two finding that there would be no change to the character of the area and had no further comment at this time. However, C A B noted that it would appreciate in the planning board's upcoming site visit. Or participate, excuse me. Number twelve, public hearing. The public uh hearing on this appeal was duly advertised and held on February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Because of the COVID nineteen pandemic, the public hearing was held virtually pursuant of the New York State Legislature S point five zero 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 one dash A point four zero 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 one. Which suspended certain provisions of the Open Meetings Law to allow municipal board to convene meetings during this current pandemic via video conferencing and or telephone conferencing. The public was afforded the opportunity to view and participate during this public hearing remotely. There was no public comment received either prior to the public hearing or during the public hearing. The public hearing was closed on February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Site visit. On March fifth, two thousand twenty-two, Z B A members Scott Bergen, Rich, Richard Cop- Kopaczynski, I knew I have a one, Tim Allenbrook, Catherine Clark, and Timothy Ekinoplu visited the applicant's property and the surrounding neighborhood to observe fast on firsthand onsite conditions. Property characteristics, setting, surrounding environment and character of the surrounding neighborhood. The purpose of this site visit was to observe the property and the surrounding area to inform the board members of the upcoming decision. The site visit was conducted solely to gather information and no business or deliberations were conducted during the site visit. Three findings of fact and conclusions of law, balancing test. In our review of the variance sought, we have considered the benefit. We have uh we have considered the benefit to the applicant if the area advance variances are granted as weighted against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. We determined that the variances requested should be granted because there is no detriment to the help to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by granting of this variance. Consideration of five factor in balancing test. In our review, the variances sought and considered consideration of the balancing between the benefit to the applicant as weighted against the detriment to the health safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community. We have considered five factors by section by section one two five dash one two four C one of the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law as follows. If the variances are granted, will it cause an undesirable undesirable change in the property's character of the ne- of the neighbor or cause a detriment to nearby properties? We find the answer to this question is no. The buildings will not be visible from River Road, the Hudson River River, nor the neighbors. The structures will be constructed to blend in with the existing structures that are located on the property. The model railroad building previously existed on the property in in the same general location where it will be constructed with the goal and intention of keeping it historically accurate. The service barn will be located by the existing service bonds with vertical siding and three barn-type doors. The guest house garage with mudroom connection will be one-story and matching the guest house siding and roof pitch. The treehouse with the elevated walkway is not visible from the Hudson River River, nor the neighbors and will be painted to blend in the surrounding vegetation. B. Can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some other method feasible or the appellant to pursue other than the area variances? We find the answer to this question is no. The locations selected by for the various buildings will have been located on the property to meet their intended uses. The model railroad building will be constructed on the location where previous current construction was located. Therefore, it is in keeping to construct the model railroad building in a similar location to its previous uh uh to a similar location to its previous location. The new guest house garage and mudroom will prevent occupants from having to walk outside during bad weather between the house and the garage. Therefore, it is best designed for its current location. The service barn will be located in a logical area where other service-type buildings exist. The treehouse roof could have been, could have been. All right, that's okay. Could have a lower pitch to bring structure into more conforming use, but as stated as stated was above. As stated, but as stated above, it is not viewable from the Hudson River Road or the neighbors. The elevated walkway from the treehouse east to grade thirty feet will also not be visible from the Hudson River River Road or neighbors. As a requested area, are the requested area variances substantial? We find the answer to this question is no. Due to the size of the property and location of the structures, we find the variances variances are not substantial. All the structures are located in such that they will not be by uh visible from the Hudson River River Road or the neighbors. Treehouse and walkway will be painted to blend with the vegetation, reducing visibility from the Hudson River. All the structures have been located on the po- property in a logical in logical areas. All right, uh D. Will the proposed variance have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? We find the answer to this question is no. All structures will be considered to match the existing structure or close to what had previously existed. Although the structures are located closer to River Road than the principal dwell dwelling, the structures are located well off of River Road and will not be visible from neighbors. In addition, some areas on the property will have additional trees and vegetation planted to further reduce use of Fern Cliff Nursing Home. Treehouse and walkway will be painted to match existing to reduce visibility from the Hudson. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to this question is yes. The proposed structures do not have to be built. There are existing structures on the property that can be used with the exception of the model railroad building. However, as stated above, the structures are logically will located and will not be visible from the Hudson River neighbors or River Road. Sixteen, minimal variance requested. In addition to our review of the five factors in balancing test, we must also determine if this these request variances are the minimum various variances necessary and adequate to accomplish what is requested by the applicant and that also preserves and protects the character of the neighborhood and health, safety, and welfare of the community. We find the answer to this question is yes. Although the additional buildings are being constructed, they are being constructed in the most logical location necessi- necessary for their intended you uh purposes. Result of balancing test, based on our analysis of the five factors discussed above and the consideration of having the minimal variance requested, we find that the balancing test favors granting the area variances sought. All structures are well-located to eliminate views from neighbors, River Road, and the Hudson River. Structures will be consistent to existing structures and previous structures that historically existed on the property. Now, therefore, be it resolved based on all the the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. The Z V, section one, the Z B A hereby grants the variance from zoning law section one two five dash twenty-seven A three and one twenty-five dash twenty-seven A one, finding that the benefits to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health and safety and welfare to of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. Our decision is supported by the balancing uh of the five factors below. The requested variance will not result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and that the granting of the area advances will not create a detriment to nearby properties. All structures will be constructed to match existing structures currently on the property or closely match what had existed on the property previously. The structures are well-located off of River Road and what will not be visible from neighbors uh the Hudson River or River Road. Some areas on the property will also have additional trees and vegetation planted to further reduce the use of Fern Cliff Nursing Home. The treehouse and associated walkway will be painted to match the existing vegetation to further reduce visibility from the river. The benefits sought by the applicant applicant cannot be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the air and area variance. The locations selected for the various buildings have been located on the property to meet their intended uses. The model railroad building will be constructed on the location where the previous model building was located. The new guest house garage and mudroom will prevent I uh will prevent occupants from having to walk outside during bad weather between house and the garage. The service barn will be located in a logical area where other service-type buildings exist. The treehouse roof uh could have a lower wing uh could have a lower pitch to bring structure into more conforming use. However, as stated above, it's not visible from the Hudson River or River Road uh and neighbors. The elevated walkway from the treehouse east to the grade will also not be visible from the Hudson River neighbors or River Road. The requested variances are not substantial. All the structures are located in such a location that they will not be visible from Hudson River, the neighbors, or River Road. The treehouse and walkway will be painted to blend with vegetation, reducing invisibility. The structures have have all been located on the property in logical areas. Due to the size of the property and location, we find the very variances are not substantial. D. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect on or impact on the physical environment condition uh environmental conditions on the neighborhood or zoning district. All the structures will be constructed to match existing structures currently on site or close to what had historically existed on the site. The structures are located well off of River Road, will not be visible to the neighbors. Some areas will also have additional trees and vegetation planted to further reduce the use of Fern Cliff Nursing Home. The treehouse and walkway will be painted to match uh to reduce uh match existing painted to match existing to reduce visibility. The alleged difficulty the alleged difficulty is self-created. Yes, the structures do not have to be built. Why does this sound like a repeat? Structures do not uh can be used for intended purposes with the exception of the model train railroad, but as stated above the structures are logically located, will not be visible from the Hudson River neighbors or River Road. Section two, does E B does E B I Z B A hereby grants the variance from zoning law one section one two five dash twenty-seven A three and one two five dash twenty-seven A one subject to the conditions stated below herein. This granting of the variance shall allow the applicant to construct the following guest house, new attached garage, brown house and car barn. The service guard garage, which all will be closer to the fronting street than the principal structure and will permit and will permit the applicant to construct and install treehouse accessory dwelling to be twenty-eight feet tall. The granting of these uh uh grant, the granting of these variances expressly contingent upon all structures shall be placed on the property and constructed as shown on submitted drawings. On submitted drawings. Uh section four, the granting of this variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Rhinebeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application in full compliance with article fourteen fee reimbursement to the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. These variances shall not be deemed granted until such fees are paid in full by applicant. Section five, the granting of the variance does not absolve the applicant from having to. from having to secure any other requirement permits or approvals. The proposed structures must be constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted. Section six, the area variances shall be null and void unless the proposed construction commences, commenced within one year of its resolution.
Good job.
Questions?
Uh, well, um, I thought you did a very nice job and, um, yeah, there was a lot to go over. And I think you, uh, did a nice job breaking it down. Um, yeah, at this point in time before we, um, vote on this, um, we need to have a conversation about, um, the resolution and the findings and, uh, does anybody have any questions, concerns or comments?
Scott, I have one, uh, I apologize, uh, I just wanted to listen and I think it might be somewhat critical. Um, there, uh, is, uh, associated with the train buildings is the roundhouse and car barn, which are attached with the breezeway. And then adjacent to that to the north is a station house. There is another building there, that station house is sixteen by twenty four feet. We've provided the documentation in both the, uh, renderings and the, uh, DBS Filcoff, uh, drawings for that. It just would need to be included and I wasn't able to keep up with which sections it would need to be included in. But I think that might be something that needs to be addressed. That's all, that's my only comment.
No, no, and, and I think, thanks Tim. No, that's a good point there, there's, there's so much here. Um, but if it's in the application and we're granting it, it has to be discussed, so, um, and by the way, just to let you know, Seth, this has gone over aside from Tim doing it, it's gone over other sets of eyes and everything else, so. Appreciate you bringing up something that, um, uh, we didn't catch, uh, so. Why, why don't you go over that again, just briefly, because what we'll do is we can pass the resolution and then, uh, add that on, you know, subject to adding that, that additional aspect.
Certainly, uh, so in the same area where the, uh, roundhouse and car barn are located, uh, just to the north of that is a sixteen by twenty structure that is called the station house. Um, we did, uh, have renderings and, and building elevations.
I missed that, I missed that.
It's okay, no worries, I just wanted, I think it's important and just would need to be included in the resolution, so that's it. Um, if, if, if we need to go through, you know, any drawings or anything about that, please.
No, no.
Okay.
No, no, and, and, and Tim, don't feel bad, uh, Kim missed it too. And everybody else, so, um, you, you did a great job on that. So, so we'll, we'll add that in. And, and thank you, Seth, I'm, I'm glad you stuck around.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Glad you stayed awake. So, it, it's, and we can work on that tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it just goes in section seven, very, very similar to with the others, so, it'll be a simple add to that one.
Yeah, that, that's a simple add. Um, anyway, I mean, you know, uh, first of all, I thought it was a very interesting, uh, project. Uh, unique to say the least. And the, the property was, was, was interesting as well, and I appreciate everybody going out there. But you know, it, it is, there's, there's, um, no one's gonna see this thing, it, 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 it's kind of interesting historically, brings out the old history major in me. And, um, you know, there are improvements to the treehouse and then, and, and other things, so I, 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 I don't have any quarrel with it and, um, I, I thought you did a nice job, so.
Thank you.
But I'd like to hear from the rest of the gang if, uh, they suit you.
I, I agree with you, Scott, it's a very interesting project. No one's gonna see it and as, uh, Tim mentioned many times, uh, you can't see these things from the Hudson River nor, uh, nor, nor River Road. Um, it's a terrific project, um. Yeah, and I, as long as they don't touch the pet cemetery, I think we're good.
Well, I think I'd add another thing maybe to it, they don't touch the pet cemetery. And then we at some point in time get to ride on the train.
That's right.
So, uh, but, uh, no, I, I, it, it, it's a very interesting project and again, I like the historical aspect of it too, that, that's kind of cool.
Yes, very.
Catherine, Tim? Any comments, concerns?
No, I think it was a, uh, challenging resolution to write and I commend you, Tim, for getting it all pulled together, so, um, I think it, it read very well and with that one addition, it will be fine.
Thank you.
All right, great. Uh, without any other comments or concerns or questions, I will ask the lovely Gretchen to do the roll call.
Did we do motions first or no?
Well, that's right, he has to do a motion and then we'll do the roll call, thank you very much.
I motioned to approve the legend, re- resolution.
Okay, as, as read and with, with, with the addition.
With that addition of the, uh, car barn are the.
And I will, and I will second that, and now Gretchen.
Okay, Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Tim E?
Yes.
And Tim A?
Yep.
Okay, it's granted. Uh, before I let you folks go, uh, just very quickly, um, we have a bunch of resolutions coming up for the next meeting. And, um, I, I, I was just, uh, wondering, let, let, let me leave Daniels aside because I think we have to get out there and see what's what. But on, on Doherty, I didn't, I didn't see any problem with, with granting that request and, and, uh, I'm not saying that that's where we go, but I just want to give some guidance to who's writing up the resolution, so. But my thought would be that to be in affirmative on Doherty and uh, Tataconda as well as, uh, Heinz. You know, subjects is the site visits and all that kind of stuff, I think they, they probably should be in the affirmative. And then on Daniel's, we can, um, we can see what we see when we go out and maybe discuss it after that. Any, any thoughts on that or?
Scott, that's why you're the chair, well, well said.
Well, thank you.
When, um, how could we facilitate a discussion on that? Or would we just have it at the next meeting and I'd have to try and write the resolution in a way that?
Yeah, uh, because we can't have a meeting when we're out there.
Yeah.
All right.
Are we talking about the Daniels right now?
We're, we're talking about Daniels right now and, 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 um, this is something that, um, you know, we have, we have to discuss kind of, you know, where we're, what we're thinking and everything else. The other three are fairly, you know, simple kind of thingies. Yeah, um, and D, D, Daniels, I mean, I, I, I don't. My, my only concern and I just, I, and it sounds like the neighbors are kind of getting along, uh, which, which is good. And, and they, there have been some improvements to make sure that the view shed is, is better, but, um, I, I, I guess.
You know, Scott, that garage is awfully tall.
Yeah.
And when I was getting, when I asked about how we measure heights, is how we measure to the top? Do we measure to the top of the, of the peak?
Yeah.
What do we measure to the average halfway up? With a slope roof? You know what I'm talking about?
No, I know exactly what you're talking about and, and I had concerns about the height, uh, but then I also was just looking at the rendering, assuming it's, you know, accurate. Let's take off that top floor and just have a regular roof on the garage. You're still gonna have a pretty obscured, um, to view of the river regardless. If you take that, you know, say you take the eight feet or six feet or whatever.
Right.
I don't know if it makes practically a difference. Um, but I understand your concern and, and I don't know, what, what does the rest of the gang think?
Well, I, I remember at one other time when we were talking about the height of a roof and yeah, can't remember, as I thought there was one time when we said you take the average.
Yes, that's what was sticking in my mind.
In which case you might not even need a variance for the height.
Right.
There's a definition in the code, it, it does depend on how he's, he's calculating the height, um, but, but there is a definition on exactly how you, how you do that and, and that comes back to, you know, wanting to know these calculations.
But, but Jim, do you remember, is the calculation they're supposed to measure to the absolute peak or to the average?
For that one, I believe it's the average between the peak and the, um, the ends of the roof. So it'd be the distance touching the middle, the midway of the triangle.
Because he was measuring to the, he was measuring to the peak, so he might not need as much of a variance then.
And this has been, you know, I guess part of the discussion of the floating numbers, trying to figure out and nail down exactly what we're looking at. Um, so that's what we need to do and I will, I'll follow up, I can send him an email. Um, as your consultant to saying, you know, make sure you're measuring it per the definition in the, in the code. And then let us know what you come back with and I think that's.
Yeah, I would, I would, when you send him the email, make sure you define what the definition code is.
I'll, I'll send the definition, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I.
What you're saying is not to the peak?
No, it, it, it depends on the roof type in the code, you, if you look at the zoning code, there's a definition of, of height. And it'll, it'll tell you how to, it depends on the building, the roof type. I believe, so you can take a look at that, but again, we, we need that clarification.
Because I think you said the elevation change was like four feet, so if we were measuring to twenty eight foot and you're doing like an average, he would still be over the twenty foot.
Right, but not by nearly as much, so it's easier to grant the variance.
He might only be four feet over it, in which case.
And, and again, I, 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 I mean, I don't want to prejudge it because I haven't been out there. But I, I just, just from what I, I saw from the, the vantage point, I think it was from, uh, the neighbor's property, um, i- i- if you take off that second story and just have a regular roof, I, you're still gonna have a really significant obstruction to view. And I think the most effective thing they did was to move it, I guess what, south?
Yes.
Uh, closer to the house. And by the way, who, I forget who it was, Tim, I think it was you, Econopoly. I thought your, your, um, your thought on taking the staircase and throw it on, on the other side, it was very helpful as well. So that may be something we consider when we do the resolution.
Yeah, because I'd really be interested, I mean, it may be like, you know, that other house where we were looking at the difference between four feet and eight feet or something. If they can move it any closer to the house, any move that direction is gonna help.
Right. Right, yeah.
Would you like me to redo the definition right now or have you had enough for tonight?
We, we've had enough and, and our brains are already, so.
Okay.
No, 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 unless you, no, no, well, well, I, I, I'm willing to be anesthetized more, so that, that, that's okay.
I was hoping it was one sentence, but you know.
No, it's, it's a paragraph.
Oh.
Um, but it, it, like I said, it, it, it's measured from, I mean, in, in summary, it's measured from the average elevation of the finished grade, actually along the side of the building, having the lowest finished grade to the highest point of a roof measurement, again, depending on the type of roof, so. I'm gonna send that email to.
Thank you.
To, to Robert, I'll send an email to, uh, uh, the definition, I'll email to all of you as well.
So let me just, from the lowest elevation to the highest point of the roof.
The, um, average elevation of a finished grade along the side of the building, having the lowest finished grade to the highest point, either on the coping of a flat roof, the deck line of a mansard roof, or the average height between the eaves and the ridge line for a.
I'm with you, Richard, don't worry.
I, I don't, I, I don't know what it means.
I mean, I don't know what it means either, I, I, I have no idea, but, but that's all right.
This is where, where an example would be really helpful. And I know we've seen an example in some other applications or.
Didn't we have it on Dr. Gooch's place or something like that or?
We've seen before where there was an example that somebody put together and showed us a little drawing, which was very helpful.
Yeah.
I can probably, I can probably find one, I can look around, we don't have one in our code, but I could probably find something that'll help. I'll see what I can find and.
Just to give us an idea, yeah.
Okay.
There, there, there are good definitions out there, I'll find something. Um, and while we're talking about Daniels, once the meeting is officially over, if everyone could just hang around for a second, I'd like to talk with you about scheduling that site visit since it might be this weekend. Um, just because it's two days, two days away, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
I just wanna say, I, I, I have a, I, I have a problem with this. This, um, this one, uh, only because, I mean, from the start, I mean, I, I know this is gonna sound crazy and pretty naive, but who decides what's a historic building? Who decides what buildings are in the, uh, in, 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 you know, a, a part of the fabric of the community? I mean, what they're taking down? I, I don't even know how that's happening in, in, in the Rhine Cliff overlay. Um, but that's, I know we're beyond that, so I apologize for throwing that in there, it's just my being very naive about this, I guess. You know, we talked a lot about the height of the house and the building. What about the width, it, it seems as if it's, it's actually wider also, so it's even taking, and to me, it looks like it's even taking more of the view shed away, I, I could be wrong. But.
I was wondering about that.
But then I. Yeah, I, it, there's, there's a lot.
Well, the staking will help out.
And then Robert turns, talks about, well, well, we'll plant trees. Well, planting trees will even take more away from the vision, so this is a very difficult situation. And I don't care any, if anybody lived in, in, in Dave Barron's house, they would have these concerns and, and, and just because the house is facing the, that it's facing northwest, doesn't mean necessarily that's their primary view shed. The sun still, still sets a lot further south than what, what they're pointing. There's so much about this, that's a little upsetting to me. I have to say, and I'm, and I'm, I'm a little bit of a, I, I know the Daniels, by the way, so, um, it's a little difficulty, but, uh, I, I, I think this site visit is very, very, very important and to be on, um, Dave Barron's land as well.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's why I made that rather unusual request, we've had it a couple of times. Um, and, and I think it's extremely important to be where, where Mr. Barron's is and, and, and maybe the other fellow too, I forget his name. Just so we, so we, so we see what they're gonna see. And we go up, you know, to the second floor, we go up to the, or we're on the, the, the first floor, wherever we are, we, 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 we do a thorough inspection of that. Um, I, I think that's extremely important, so.
But not only David Barron's and the other fellow, I mean, but David's, uh, father, um, Henry lives just south of him. So, uh, you know, we haven't heard from Henry and I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, amazed that we have not heard from Henry.
Well, we can, uh, if it's David's dad, we'll go over there and, 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 and trespass on his part on.
We, we will be welcome.
Yes, yes, it, it'll be very interesting, it'll, it'll be fun, it's, um, it's an interesting.
Do we want to adjourn first before we, or do we want to just go ahead and talk about the scheduling? Sunday afternoon, Saturdays does look like it's gonna be rainy.
I think we can adjourn and then spend the time, that's not, that's not deliberations about the application, so.
Yeah, deliberations have to be on the record. Um, so, uh, at this point in time, I don't think we have anything else. Um, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
A second?
I second.
All right, all in favor? Hi, all right, carried. The, uh, meeting is over.